The Provo City Planning Commission meeting, it is March 12th at 6:00 PM and we're going to get started. We'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Jensen, you okay to lead us with that?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we will now have a roll call. Mr. Shin.
Adam Shin, no conflicts.
Barbie De Soto, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
And Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. When speaking, be sure to speak in the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated tolerated at any time. Please refrain from booing or being otherwise disruptive during the hearing. We will start with item number one, Spencer Heimis. Request project plan approval for a new Walmart super center and fuel center in the FC3 freeway commercial three zone located at approximately 1957 South, 500 West Lakewood neighborhood. Aaron Arndt Moore from city staff will present this item.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I've handed up to the dais, the materials board. So you can have a better feel of the building. So we've got here the property map against I-15 and Lakeview Parkway. And the zone map which shows the extent of the FC3 freeway commercial zone in the city. This is the only area of the city that this zone is applied. The zone was written for this property in an attempt to attract a regional draw commercial user. And more recently with the mayor's focus of getting a west side grocery store. The focus has been to use that FC3 zone to to find a grocery user. So we've got one applying for a project plan now with Walmart. Their project. It takes up this portion of the property. There'd be future phases for other commercial and residential on the surrounding property to this project site. But so that you can see the extended the project site. The Walmart super center itself is about 176,000 square feet of retail. And then up against Lakeview Parkway, you could see the the fuel kiosk and the fuel pumps there. They're planning for 12 fuel pumps with the Walmart fuel station. Looking at the site plan, you can also see a lot of green. They've they've done well to meet our our city standards on landscaping, parking lot landscaping, things of that nature. Over nine around 900 shrubs and 300 trees just on that portion of the site. So in time, that will be a very attractive feature for the property. Along with this project plan proposal. I should mention that staff reviewed the project plan application. It is actually still ongoing through the staff review. There are technical details that need to be addressed with some of the departments, public works, power, things like that. Things that will continue through that process. But we thought it would be a good time to bring it forward to the planning commission. You'll notice that there's a recommended approval with the condition that they finish that that staff CRC review process. The other condition on that recommendation of approval is the this parking reduction request. So the plan commission has seen a number of these mostly residential projects, right? So this is one of the few commercial projects that have come through and asked for a parking reduction request. You'll see a highlight of their their justification study there on the bottom corner of this slide. The the full study is in your reports. And it justifies that 11% reduction going from where the city requirements would have 880 spaces, bringing that down to 791. So you can hopefully you've read through those justifications and are comfortable with that. As staff, as planning staff, we're comfortable with that reduction. Knowing that a lot of that came because of our more intense parking lot landscaping standards that Walmart typically doesn't have in a Walmart parking lot. They've they've still been able to kind of meet what they would expect for their market, and I think they know their market well. That is all I have on this proposal, but I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Armar. Does anyone have any questions for city staff? Commissioner Jensen?
I was wondering if you could address the ingress and egress questions?
Yes, thank you.
Because when that first map you showed was very telling compared to this one because it shows that it's really not right on 500 West. So if you could explain that?
So the main connection will be coming in, wow. There we go. Will be coming in right here on Lakeview Parkway. That will be the main ingress and egress. There will be a full traffic light. That is to be installed with this project plan are with this building. So that light will come in and that will be the main access. Through the future phase, there will be a secondary access here. That secondary access is required because of the amount of daily trips and the amount of vehicles that go in there. So that that second access, which would be very secondary in design and in wayfinding, would would come out through here. And as part of that, this section of 500 West would be improved to meet the the traffic demand that this would bring.
I thought I read somewhere in the report about there being a ride in, ride out. Was that just from that new intersection road into the property? Or was that in and out of Lakeview Parkway?
That's coming in right here off 500 West. Yeah. So the 500 West would have a ride in, ride out here. And you'd see different lane striping that comes along with that through that section of 500 West. Going north and 500 West, that would remain the same for now.
So that would hopefully dissuade people from exiting that way if they were trying to get on Lakeview Parkway?
Yeah, we anticipate the majority of people would want to use the lighted signal. It's gonna be a much easier way to get in and out of the parking lot.
What are the requirement, like what what entity is requiring the second exit? Is that like a state law, federal law?
It's an engineering standard.
Engineering standard.
I'm wondering if this is enough space looping around for the gas line? And that won't spill over onto Lakeview Parkway because Costco anyway is like, they had to add like this whole cone system in parts of their parking lot. And I'm wondering if that's.
Oh, you mean for like queuing of vehicles?
Yes, queuing of vehicles for fuel.
There. So there isn't a code requirement for queues for fuel. There is for drive-throughs, but not for fuel fuel stations. So.
Should think about that later.
There's there. We'll note that, but yeah, they've they're not required to do anything about that.
What? What entity owns the land to the West?
So.
It's gonna spill.
You're gonna have to ask the applicant where they're at on contracts. Right now, as far as the city understands, it is all owned by one property owner.
Okay. And is it is this kind of considered as one large project or will that be a separate project?
It'll be a different project. It's it's kind of a future phase for this area.
This area.
So you'll you'll notice that my second condition of the second recommendation is that the plat's recorded. So that would have that plat would have to come before the building permit comes for the store. So the planning out subdividing the lot.
Do you know what is planned for that surrounding area, kind of buffering the neighborhoods?
Yes. Yeah, we've we've talked about concepts there with property owner, some some other commercial users along Lakeview Parkway. And then a townhome product filling up the rest of the site.
And then I can see here how there's essentially a buffer between the houses on the on the north side. And it's sort of like the natural, whatever whatever's currently there. Is that the plan to essentially just leave those trees there and?
Yeah, well, if when the townhomes come in there, those those most of those trees would come down to build the townhomes, right?
So there's towns, but I'm saying on that like very north.
We're talking about.
I'm changing locations now. We we were talking previously about the west side. I think that's where the townhomes are going. I'm talking about that little strip of.
This this would also be townhomes.
Oh, that's also townhomes. Got it. Okay.
Going back to some of the comments we received, can you comment on the distance between lights? Along Lakeview Parkway here, someone was concerned that would get backups onto the on-ramp onto the freeway.
So I can say that is one of the pending staff review items is waiting for that that traffic study from Walmart. That study has to be submitted to the city and to the state because it's so close to a UDOT, you know, the freeway. So that's going to be reviewed by the state and the city. So. To be determined, but but they will have their standards applied to whatever that studies is.
So let's say it's found to be insufficient with the process at that point. Would they have to come back to us and say?
No, so the project plan would would be good. They they may have to do enhancements on the roadways, whether that's just like the Parkway or the on-ramp off-ramp area of the freeway, whatever is indicated there, they'd have to come back and complete those.
Commissioner Jensen, you had a question?
Yeah, I had questions about. Are there any, has there been any discussion at all about? Like crosswalks and especially going out this way and out that way into the neighborhoods, especially when the townhomes are built? And then when that other second phase is done, because I'm just saying like, if this is going to be. You know, connected, it really should have a pretty intense crosswalk getting over there into the neighborhood so that people feel like they can go walk.
You're talking about east-west through this area?
Yes. And going on to this, is this 500? Yeah, yeah, for or like some sort of separate path planned through there for bikes and walking. Because otherwise you're just gonna have more and more.
Yeah, though though it is not part of this review, I can tell you they are thinking about that and the concepts we've seen have have given a lot of attention to that detail.
Okay, yes, because I would definitely.
You see, you'll see that when those those requests come in.
I have one one more question for you. What is the plan or is there any plan for sidewalks along Lakeview Parkway?
Yes, so that that's one of the this here, the staff comments to be addressed with a future revision is is connecting that. Sidewalk in front of the. The site.
Great.
Yep.
I have one question. As we look at 500 West, you mentioned the future improvements as that connection is made. The secondary connection, what kind of changes are we thinking are gonna happen on that on that road there?
I would defer to David Day from engineering on that. I don't know the details.
Okay. And I I had one other just procedural question about just with this. So we were here talking about this concept plan, right?
Project plan.
Project plan, okay. Just for for my understanding and for us here, like, because I know this is, we've had questions about this in the past, like, what's kind of our latitude with like? What we are able to to ask of the developers, say, like, if we say, hey, we like this, but but we want to ask for certain changes, like, or if we just say, like, there's there's issues that we feel like we just can't say yes to this, like, what's our latitude to be able to?
So with the project plan on a on a property that's zoned and planning staff has confirmed it's permitted to use and all the standards and regulations of that zone have been met through the staff review. The planning commission has to approve the project plan. In this case, you have a parking reduction request, which is discretionary to the planning commission. My commission can approve or deny that parking reduction request, which would obviously change the site.
So is that the only reason we're reviewing it or is the project large enough that we would be reviewing it anyway?
Come to you anyway. Any any project over three acres and a commercial project over three acres comes to the plan commission for approval.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Armar? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to invite the applicant Spencer or Mr. Heimis to come forward. You will have 15 minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted following your presentation. We will invite you. We will ask you questions at that time.
Great. Spencer Heimis, I'm here with Galloway. We are the engineering design consultant for this project. 172 North East Promontory in Farmington. I don't have a whole lot to add to the presentation from staff, but definitely want to just mention to the planning commission that I think a lot of the considerations and concerns that I've heard so far from the commission are associated with what's going to be developed surrounding the property. We're just here as a representative for the Walmart development component and are not with the developer who currently owns the property and is is working towards putting design together for that adjacent development. But definitely want to answer any questions. We're obviously excited about the prospect of this grocery store coming through to serve the Provo community. We've tried to put together a very attractive landscaping plan and fit this design into the area that we think will be a nice contribution to the community.
At the end of, oh, sorry. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, happy to answer any questions that I may. I do have our civil engineer here with us as well. So if there's any technical questions, we might be able to provide for you. Love to answer those.
Okay, great. Commissioner Jensen?
Okay, I have a list of questions for you. So I'll start off with one that we already asked. If you could describe the plan for the fuel queuing, just to alleviate concerns that that's enough space for cars to come in and.
Yeah, so.
And how they're gonna get out, like the ingress egress there is unknown to me.
Yeah, so as you can see that it's coming off of Lakeview Parkway and it'll have that first entry point in there that circles around towards the fuel pumps. This has been a model that has worked in other locations. And so they've they've made tweaks over the years to how this is designed and laid out, and we feel like we're confident in how things are structured so far that it will not become an issue where cars are queuing onto the street and causing any sorts of problems because that's obviously a design concern for us as well. And as mentioned, we've we've already tried to tweak this over several iterations to make sure that it's a situation that's not going to cause problems.
So they come in on that little small curve off of that new road. They go all the way around.
They'll have two options for the pumps that are there. There's that first immediate turn through there. And then there's also the ability to go all the way out and around.
Okay, so neither one of them is an exclusive one-way road. They can go in and out.
Correct.
Both ways. Okay.
Yes.
That's a little bit less like a Costco or Sam's Club nightmare. My next question is that building across from the fuel pumps, like a little mini mart?
Yes.
Okay. Next question, on the side elevations and rear elevations that we have, it shows some bays. And it says side elevation right, there's two bays shown on the far right of that one, and then on side elevation left, it shows three bays. Are those actually the same extension of the building on the backside? So there's like bays that are going all the way through or I'm just looking at the map going, how are they getting to those? Is it that little overhang in the back that's where the bays are? Because from the side, it looks like it's all flush with the building.
Are we talking about the gas station still?
No, 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 I'm on to the main building.
I believe she's referring to the truck bays that are shown in the elevation.
Yeah, it's on page eight of our staff report if somebody has an image for that, but.
So we are working with the engineers, with city staff engineers to make sure that the truck turnarounds will be appropriate. We have it mapped out and they have the ability to take a look at those exhibits that have been put together for it. But as part of every project that we do, we want to make sure that the trucks are able to get in and out without any problems. And we do a mapping of that to ensure that that's not going to be an issue. In addition to that, the back area, while it probably looks small in scale due to the magnitude of the overall project. There will be plenty of space along that north side for those trucks to get in and out of there, as well as circle around the building and back to the main road.
Okay, so it's not as tight as it looks.
Correct.
Okay. And then my last question. The traffic study numbers, I appreciated all that information. My question is, do those numbers also account for the typical numbers of large vehicles that you see parked in Walmart parking lots like semis or campers or whatever that often take the back 40?
Yeah, so I think, you know, it's it's been commonplace historically for a lot of these big box retails to have a lot more parking than they ever truly need. Maybe, you know, Black Friday or some other times of the year where they're fully utilizing all the parking that they have available to them. Over the years, especially in some of these infill projects that we try to do designs for. They've have a much more reasonable footprint that they're taking in consideration for that parking. And for this one, normally Provo City requires for retail, I believe it's five per thousand. And with these larger buildings, it's just a lot of the times it's not needed to be that large. And so we're looking at, I believe, about 4.9 is our proposal. We feel like that is more than adequate for what we're expecting for this store and should be plenty to service and make sure there's still great parking available for everybody, but not over utilizing the space that's available.
I have a kind of a subset of that with the numbers and the traffic study. How many of of the trips for the gas station and the store itself are the same vehicle? How is that number swallowed up in the total numbers of trips and vehicles that will be parking?
That's a great question. I'm not the traffic engineer that put the technical report together, but I do know that they follow specific procedures that are based in the fundamentals of traffic engineering. I don't know how to specifically answer that question, though. But I do know that they properly take that into account on how they're measuring all of this.
Okay, that's it for me.
Does anyone else have questions? Mr. Shin?
I have a question. I was looking at the the elevation, the little plan there. I know that one of the, I think one of the concerns I I've heard brought up as we've been leading up to this meeting has been kind of, you know, just the look and feel of of a new building, kind of looking and feeling more on the industrial kind of warehouses boxed off kind of look as opposed to something that's more of like a, you know, neighborhood kind of feeling. And that's kind of like an abstract thing to bring up, but like, is that something that like, you know, if you know, given neighborhood feedback, could that be in the cards? Could that be on the table for like, you know, some differences in architectural style that might make it feel a little bit different than than what we're seeing here? Or does that just?
That's a good question. I know that a lot of work and energy has been put into what we've currently provided based on what we have found in the ordinance, and we've also made some additional adjustments based on feedback from staff. So it just, I guess, depends on, I guess, what details you might be specifically looking for and I think certainly, you know, we want to make sure that this is gonna fit well within the community in whatever considerations are necessary for the planning commission. But what we've arrived at so far is something that we have worked with staff to bring into compliance with what those design standards are for this zone.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open the hearing to public comments. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If the commission has questions, we will invite you to come forward at that time. This time is for comments only. If you have any questions about an item, please speak to city staff. If any neighborhood district chairs are present, they can have three minutes to comment and may come forward first.
Hi, my name is Andrew Terry. I'm the district chair for District Three, so that represents West Provo, which this grocery store will sit in my district. I did get a few points of feedback and concern. I think you covered some of them. Traffic was a concern that I'd heard from some of the residents. There was specifically concern about traffic backing up potentially onto the freeway as well and kind of blocking like access from the residents, either getting on or off the freeway. As well, there was a desire to have some sort of like walking trailer path along the perimeter of the property if possible, as well as making sure that connections are made to the walking over path, overpass by the freeway. There's a walking path to there and wanting to make sure that we preserve pedestrian bike access there over to Walmart. So that was the majority of the feedback that I heard from our community.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood district chairs present? All right, public comments are now open to the general public. You will have two minutes to make each comment.
So this is my time to get up and recognize that the planning commission received emails from Lisa Baker, Abby Byrd, and Noah Hume before the hearing. Due to the timing of these comments, I'm gonna read in. You didn't receive copies of those. So so let me read those in as we received emails and close to the hearing tonight. One comes from Brick Barnes. She says, Dear Planning Commission, here's feedback I received from my neighborhood about. She says, Dear Planning Commission, here's feedback I received from my neighborhood about the new Walmart. My two concerns that I can think of right now is 500 West. People fly down it now. Been close to several accidents by the drug rehab building. Visibility looking south isn't the best. How can that road handle the increased traffic? Also, 1100 West and Lakeview Parkway get a traffic light. So some of that's been answered. Then part two, part of my concern, heavy traffic at the end of 500 West and Lakeview Parkway. There are multiple residential streets entering onto 500 West. If the traffic begins to back up due to poor lighting, timing and increased traffic will start to create bottlenecks and difficulties for the residents to take anything but a right-hand turn onto 500 West. Also, while driving right now from the freeway exit to 500 West may feel like a long stretch, adding an additional light in between the stretch to aid with the necessary entrance off Lakeview Parkway into the Walmart parking lot could start to cause this area to look like the 400 South area in Springville next to their Walmart. Since it is so close to the freeway exit and already a heavy traffic area. There are school bus stops along the southern section of 500 West too, with increased traffic that poses a safety concern for the children. Now everyone stops when those red lights are on. And then finally, with how high the water table is in the area, even with buildings building the ground levels up, have sufficient soil tests been completed to determine that a fuel station so close to the lake wouldn't pose a risk to the lake's ecosystem? If somehow there were a spill or break in one of the underground tanks. Just hoping that the city will require aesthetics that are more pleasing than the Springville Spanish Fork locations looking to Heber and Cedar Hills as examples of more pleasing styles. This will increase the amount of traffic. Concerned about the entrance on Walmart and the added traffic light. There you go. That's Brick Barnes. And then Chrissy Sorden, if you allow me. Another one. Dear Planning Commission members, I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing as a concerned resident of Lakewood neighborhood regarding the proposed Walmart superstore development near our community. While I understand the economic benefits that a new retail store can bring, I would like to respectfully express my concerns about the potential impact on traffic and neighborhood safety. 500 West is currently a two-lane road with no room for expansion. The road is a key access point from our neighborhood. And with the increased traffic a Walmart would bring, I worry that it may become congested and hazardous. Additionally, many vehicles already exceed the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, making it dangerous for children, pedestrians, and cyclists in our community. Increased traffic from a high-volume store would likely worsen this issue. Further exacerbating the situation, there is also a residential development, Osprey Townhomes, just the west of the proposed Walmart location. I think that she means west of 500 West there. This development has only two points of entry, one of which is connected to the neighborhood heading north, but the main point of entry is 500 West. This further adds to the congestion of 500 West and the intersection with Lakeview Parkway. The combined traffic from both the new Walmart and the Osprey Townhomes could create significant delays and safety hazards for residents, especially during peak traffic hours. Furthermore, I understand that the proposed Walmart design includes only two points of entry. Given the expected volume of customers and delivery trucks, I do not believe this will be sufficient to prevent severe congestion in this certain area. A different location with better infrastructure and access points might be more suitable for this project. I humbly suggest that additional input from Provo residents and more thorough traffic research be gathered before a final decision is made regarding what should be developed on this lot. Ensuring the safety and well-being of our community should be a priority, and I believe that further analysis of the traffic impact could provide important insights. My hope is that the city planners will take these concerns into consideration and explore alternative solutions that prioritize both development and the safety of our neighborhood. I appreciate your time and consideration in this manner. And I welcome any opportunity to discuss potential solutions further. Thank you for your service, Chrissy Sorden. Thank you for allowing me.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further commenters, we will now close public comments. Commissioners, what are we thinking? Commissioner Jensen?
I was wondering if Mr. Day could answer some of the questions that we don't have answers for. So questions about the pedestrian and bike accesses that might be required. Questions about the water table and whether having fuel tanks in an area like that has poses any risk to the water quality or the water safety, I guess. And then there was a question about a light at eleven hundred West and Lakeview, but I don't know if that's something that really needs to be addressed. That's several blocks away from this, but it might, you can decide whether you think that's pertinent.
Yeah, David Day with Public Works. So you'll have to remind me if I miss something.
Why? It was like only four questions in one.
We're anticipating we're anticipating a new traffic signal right here. So that that kind of takes care of the vehicles and the pedestrians crossing a sidewalk going up along the road to to the intersection here. Probably missing from this drawing would be a sidewalk coming down to this intersection. We'll probably have to talk about how to do that. Depending on what gets built first, we may have to have this project put in a sidewalk to make that pedestrian connection.
And will that tie into the pedestrian and bike trails on the east of the property that come over the freeway and also the ones on the south?
Yeah, so that the sidewalk and pedestrian trail come over. There is a system to get up on here and come across I-15. And you stay along the road till you get to the intersection.
Then it ends.
Yeah, it's it's a drop off right there. So that would come down this way.
That'd be nice.
And connect up to the site. That's probably the most direct route. There there used to be one time a connection right here. But that was eliminated by UDOT, so we didn't have really much say in that. The tanks are highly regulated for the the gas tanks. They have to be tested and sealed and and have double containment. So we're not worried about that. That's that's a highly regulated operation when you're putting those tanks. There's a lot of inspections and testing to make sure they're not leaking. Is there anything else that you're?
Just whether the question of a light at eleven hundred West pertains to this project enough that you wanted to answer that?
Not not as far as eleven hundred West, but eleven hundred West. Eventually, when the traffic gets to a certain level and it meets the warrants and it it'll require us to put in a signal there at some point. But we have to study it and we do that every year to check the volumes, the delays, the pedestrian counts and you use all of that to decide if it's the right time or not to put one in.
Do you regulate what they need to do for pedestrian and bike access on the west side of the property at 500 West at this point? Or would you wait until the other parcels? Come up for a project?
Now, we would have to have at least one connection and I would think the most reasonable one would be that sidewalk along the parkway to get to the intersection. That would get people, you know, along here into the site. In my mind, this will be built first and this will be built second. So it it makes sense to have a route around that site while there's work being going on there anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about, sorry, before we go, about five hundred West and the future connections and work being done there. Aaron mentioned future improvements or changes being made. We're talking about the potential. I saw in the document that we got future potential plans for this this west part of the area that would involve either one or a couple of of turn-ins. And I think there's there's a mention of like a ride-in, ride-out, but I wasn't quite clear on that. Could you clarify kind of what are what the vision is for five hundred West?
Yeah, so five hundred West is it's either an arterial or a collector, but it's an important part of our transportation system. And so there will be connections to Fifth West from this site. They're just not shown here. And and with with that light currently going in on the parkway into this Walmart site. It it would probably not be the ideal situation for Walmart not to have another connection, but this functions as it's shown.
So there is, I think Commissioner Whitlock was asking about, this is the 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 question of having a second entrance on five hundred, or at least one other entrance exit on five hundred West. That's just like an engineering standard that we're we're going off there.
Yeah, yeah. So so there there would most likely be a connection here at this intersection. Right now, that's not shown because that part's not part of this, you know, discussion, but there will be a requirement for a second access as that other parcels develop.
Do we anticipate, is there any chance that that could be like that area there would merit like a signalized intersection or like a signalized pedestrian crossing to help with with safety getting back and forth?
Most likely, this location will be eventually signalized. I don't think we've we've got enough information to say that right now. But experience would say that that would be signalized. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right, unless anyone else has any questions for Director Day. Okay, thank you. Commissioner DeSoto, you said you wanted to seem like you wanted to share something?
Sorry, I didn't. No, I just kept wanting to ask him, but it's really not. I just am mostly concerned about access and permeability for bikes and walking from the neighborhood because I mean, the it's all to code and, you know, we're gonna have a Walmart, but I do think that like in general, it would be better not to have like a superstore and instead have smaller ones throughout. But I know that's like this is a big deal to get on the west side since they've been wanting one for a real long time. Yeah, so I'm just concerned about allowing people to have choices when it comes to like how they get there and making sure like it's safe for kids if they want to run over there and get, you know, whatever. My siblings and I used to walk to Seven Eleven when I was like five and, you know, get a candy or whatever. So, I mean, that kind of thing, the kind of thing that gives people freedom. I really like to see that. I know it's not required, but I I do think that maybe we should think about that for the future to make sure there's some sort of yeah, and access. And then also to Commissioner Shin's point. I know we can't say anything now, but we I think we should start looking at like design. I mean, we should maybe ask for a study session on design standards because I do think that like traditional styles are more pleasing to most people. It's just like they've studied this and people like traditional styles better. And they tend to look better for longer than an industrial style. They just they look kind of gross very soon. So I know that some people were concerned about like having Walmart next to them. And I think in this case, because it is kind of a big ask to have the neighborhood take this right next to them, even though it is a buffer against the freeway, but I mean, that's something that in the future, we could probably help soften some of these issues in the future to make sure that it actually is integrated with the neighborhood by walking bike trails, that kind of thing. And just the design could be a little, yeah, just like less boxy warehouse looking in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Kendall?
Can't we ask that they do that for this one? I mean, isn't that part of our approval process for this? No, we're past that. Okay. All we've got is parking, the parking reduction. Okay, which it makes sense to me, the parking reduction request. I think a lot of people are starting to do more of the pickup and it's very convenient and you know, that helps with the parking situation.
I I felt like the parking study wasn't just based on the change in the market either. I felt like it was based on actual on-the-ground usage and they have thousands of case studies to compare it to. So I feel like I can I feel really comfortable with it. I also
Go ahead, sorry.
I also have never seen such great landscaping in this type of a store.
I was gonna say that. It is.
And I'm super excited about that. I know it's not going to be that full at planting, but I feel like that says a lot that they're willing to not ask for exceptions on that part of it.
Yeah, I think with the parking, it looks like, I mean, you know, this is you know, to me, this looks like it's pretty well isolated from well, I should say it's isolated enough away from the neighborhoods in terms of like where the access points are going to be that I you know, it doesn't look to me like this is going to cause issues of, you know, if people want to overflow and like get into other streets, you know. It's just you're coming off Lakeview, you're gonna park or not park. You're not gonna go drive into somebody's neighborhood, I don't think, to then walk to Walmart and tow your groceries back. So, you know, if if you know, if that's what they want to do, I think it it seems reasonable for the parking.
Yeah.
I do wonder, looking at this map, it looks like there's really only one logical entrance to the parking lot. The other one seems to feed towards the fuel station. And I'm wondering if we should be worried about that. That really every single car that's going into that parking lot is coming off of that little road in between the store and the parking lot. Can everyone see what I'm referring to?
Yeah, it's like Target. In other words, it's like a norm. Where you'll have to stop for all the pedestrian crossing constantly, which is probably good, but yeah. Also, is maybe this is a question for the sorry, I forgot to Mr. Hymus, but the, is there bike parking planned?
Thank you, Mr. Hymus.
I am not sure if there's currently bike parking in the proposal, but I don't see a reason why we would have an issue with that. We we've done it on other projects. And it very actually may well be part of the current proposal. I'm just not sure specifically right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I I would feel real, I mean, I'm glad they want a parking reduction. I also think that that should not like just naturally come with some bike parking and bike access, walking access, things like that, because this is so close to the neighborhood, which is really nice for a lot of people. You know. But if it's gonna be unfriendly, like a hostile environment to walk or bike, people will still drive.
One comment, oh, sorry, it's too loud. This, to the to the question about the entrances. Looking here, it does look like you can you can come into that that southern fuel station entrance and loop like over the top and then down south and then get to the bottom and like the south and the parking lot. So you could come in to all those parking stalls, looping around the fuel station, coming in from the the south. Can you see that there? So I think there there are like, if it's full, you can you can get in the back that way, right?
Commissioners, how are we feeling? Do we want to keep discussing or? I feel I'm hearing generally people are supportive of the parking reduction, which is the primary consideration here, I think, and yeah, it's I I appreciate the community letters. Lots of good points made. I feel like a lot of them were addressed by city staff and the remaining ones can be addressed through the CRC comments. I I will personally say that I think since I've been on the planning commission, we've heard requests for the need of grocery and food access on the west side of the city. It's a bit of a food desert and I think this will serve that part of the city well. I think this is the place you'd want a Walmart if we were to have one in our city right next to the freeway like this. You're not going to get a lot of traffic coming in from other cities or other locations, kind of driving through all the city roads. I hear the concern about 500 West, but my assumption is the the num, the amount of people for which that will be the optimal route versus just getting on University and then going over and turning right on you know, on Lakeview and coming in is going to be very small. Most the vast majority of the city is going to be coming on Lakeview Parkway or University Avenue and then via Lakeview Parkway. That'd be my guess. So I hear the concern, but I I don't imagine it to be a tremendous amount of additional traffic coming through that direction would be my guess.
This project coming to us is actually kind of an exciting result of thoughtful planning. We've watched over the last five years as we tried to address the need for a grocery store and tried to address how we wanted to attract economic benefits to our city. E- economic benefits to our city and this land was rezoned with specifically that in mind. And the standards for the zone were written with specifically that in mind, and then we've had them come to us. And work with us to meet exactly what the people who. Who wrote the Southwest Area Plan were saying they wanted to have. They worked together with the people saying, we don't want the commercial zone to go all the way to the houses. So they've got this housing buffer that they're they're thinking of of presenting as the next phase. So it's kind of exciting to see that that planning helped to get something to come that meets the needs of the community. And did it in not a haphazard way, but in a way that um. That seems to be well thought out. I feel sad for the people who felt that this was a surprise to them and that. It's affected their property values somehow, but this has been on the ground. At least it's, you know, as long as these homes have been occupied, so it's not really that someone surprised them. It's just unfortunately that they weren't aware.
I I could add to that too, that I think it is nice that there's planned townhomes, et cetera, to buffer it, because they definitely will know.
Yeah.
What's there when they move in and that's gonna create a nice.
Yeah.
Division there.
And some people might want that and they'll go into it knowing that that's what's gonna be there, so.
Walkable to Walmart Walmart.
Yeah.
People will like that, I think. Alright, should we do a, anyone willing to do a motion?
Also, I was I was just gonna add one comment before we move on. I know that as as we've been talking about this, I have heard, I've heard comments and I've I've. I've heard conversations about um some concerns, I think, just about the like. You know, it's it's west side, but it's not really very west, this location, you know, just that being a concern of. You know, the I think I think I hope that as we discuss this, we don't forget that there 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 is demand. I think there's a hope among residents. That we there is a future for some other kinds of 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 commercial use and shops and that kind of stuff that could come be more. You know, more on the west side, more integrated into the neighborhoods. I think that this is, you know, this will this will serve people and this will be um. Helpful, but also for a lot of people, it's it's not probably gonna be that much closer than the existing Walmart in ORM, you know, it's kind of like equitist and if you live in the middle of the west side, so. So I I hope that as we think about this, we're also looking forward to saying like, hey, look, there is a, there is a. You know, there is a hope among residents that we can get other kinds of things, you know, beyond just the Walmart supercenter model, but other kinds of things in on the west side as well that we. We don't, you know, just don't forget about that. That's all I wanted to share.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Um I move that we approve. Uh the proposed project plan for a new Walmart supercenter and fuel center in the FC three through freeway commercial three zone. Located approximately nineteen fifty seven, south five hundred west with the following conditions. But the remaining CRC comments are addressed, especially with the sidewalk connectivity into the existing infrastructure. That the final subdivision be recorded um and I I move that we approve the parking reduction request.
Do we have, do we have a second on that motion?
One second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to have two separate motions if we're going to approve the parking request and then that could just be part of this same motion?
Alright, uh do we have any discussion on the motion? Alright, Commissioners uh Commissioner Shin, you okay to start the voting?
I.
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 I will also vote I, uh that result is unanimous. And uh that item passes. We will now move to item number two. And three, we're reading those in together, right, right? Item number two and three, Eric Jurgensen requested zone map amendment from the A one ten agricultural zone to the AI. Airport industrial zone in order to move forward with plans for flex industrial space. Located approximately at thirty three thousand four hundred and twenty west center street, Fort Utah neighborhood. And uh should I read the second one also?
Yes, please.
Okay, Eric Jurgensen requests concept plan approval for a new flex industrial campus in a proposed AI industrial zone zone. Located approximately at thirty thousand four hundred and twenty west center street, Fort Utah neighborhood. Aaron Armoir from city staff will present this item.
Thank you again. Um so here we have a property that a lot of you are very familiar with. At this point, uh you've seen a general plan amendment come through in the past few years. You've seen. Uh a zone map amendment on this exact property come through uh that wasn't finished because the development agreement wasn't signed by that. The former property owner. Uh you've also seen the west side of this, that that large twenty four acre parcel to the west. Uh come through with the a reason to airport industrial. That one did get completed with the development agreement and. Um though it hasn't been updated on the online map, if you go to the online map, it is essentially approved and done. Just GIS getting uh the updated. So now this portion is is back in front of us. Uh I've highlighted the area in red, so it takes in three properties. Uh one of which is city owned, so you'll see their uh condition. Uh speaking to that about surplusing that property and and having the property owner purchase that and wrap it into their future subdivision and project plans. Uh but for now, we're just talking about the rezone and the concept plan. Uh so you can see in the bottom corner, as I mentioned. General plan down here is airport related activities. Um all that stuff in brown to the west and to the south is also that same designation. Uh interesting the to note in the zone map, uh airport industrial has um kind of been been. Being approved through this area. Uh you can see it to the southwest on the south side of Center Street and then to the southeast uh. On that little island between uh Lakeview Parkway and uh like shore drivably. Um so yeah, airport industrial was the go out here and and it's it's starting to come more and more to you. Uh so here's the concept related to this reason request. Uh it shows essentially combining all these properties together, the part that's. Ben zone and the part that's in front of you tonight into one overall project with three warehouse buildings. Um a large part of this uh that was. A a big part of the discussion with staff, with planning commission, with the city council already was this open space element against the river uh. We value the river, we we have plans adopted that tell us we should continue to value the river and not turn our backs to it. Um and I think that this resulted in providing additional open space and amenities, park spaces. Um useful spaces against the river and then that brown trail you can see. Uh circling this entire property would have a public access easement across that. Um that's been recorded on the the part that's been zoned to the west and we'd expect that to be part of this proposal as well. Uh here are some renderings of what those buildings could look like uh again. Two-story warehouse buildings uh compliant with AI uh zoning. Um specific users details uh with the site plan and. And actual elevations would be coming with the project plan in the future and that'd be coming back to this commission for approval. Um but this kind of gives you an idea of what uh the the property owner. Uh intends to build and and could build under the zoning standards. Um. Yeah, I believe that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Hi, Commissioner Hill. Uh just one question, if you can go back to the kind of overview map, yeah, this one. Um there's a couple of homes along there on the bottom, are those? Part of this or they?
Yeah, so those are um the property owners of the bigger pieces, uh they own those homes and and that's part of this deal.
Part of the sale, okay.
The bottom right corner you'll see is not included, uh though efforts were made uh to tie that in. Uh in the end, the owner can agree to it, uh so that would be remaining as a a little residential island on the corner there.
Okay.
Um for the parking, is this like spot on with what's required or is it extra?
No, so so again, we're at concepts. Um so the project plan, if there's a parking reduction request would come to you at that time. What I put in the packet was kind of a a general study where they might end up. Uh but there's no need to to look at a parking reduction with the concept plan and rezone. Uh the the concept plan is just kind of showing you typically what could appear on this if the zones are approved.
And just to reiterate, because I think this is an important point, most of this, a majority of this property is already zoned AI, right?
Yes, uh you'll see that in the in the gray uh the the crosshatch. To the the left, there's about twenty five, twenty six acres there that's already got the zoning to do this.
I have a question. So I'm seeing on the map here, I'm looking on Google, um the actual trails across the river from this property.
The river trail, yes. That's correct, it's on the north side of the river. This would just be an additional path that the public around here could could use and and enjoy the river.
Commissioner Jensen, thank you.
Mister Arbark, could you um remind me, well, I guess. Do you know the reason why no development agreement was ever filed?
I don't. Um typically, when that happens, the the developer that brought it through for the entitlements um. Once they get to a certain point, the sometimes the finances don't work out, sometimes the plan doesn't work out and they don't finish, they don't end up finishing that um. It happens more often than when one would expect. Um it's happened a couple of times with this specific property.
Okay, I'm just looking at it. I remember this coming through in several different iterations over the years and um. I remember when it came through last time, we discussed a lot about if this was what we wanted for this area near the river. And the discussion about the the trails being back there and the amenities that they were offering. Being a huge selling factor for why the planning commission and the city council probably um recommended that it go through.
Right.
Um and then it didn't for whatever reason, but I'm I'm sort of inclined to say we came to the conclusion one time. So why wouldn't we come to it again? And the same issues still come to me that. I don't want it to become a scary place where people don't want to use the river. We aren't losing the river trail, it's on the other side, but um. We talked about why this was not suitable for residential because it's in basically the approach or departure path of the airport. And so I understand why this little arm, it has been designated in the general plan as such. But I guess my question is, I guess I have two questions. What if the use intensifies after we um. Think that what they're presenting is, if we were to say what they're presenting is acceptable. What's to keep the use from intensifying to something we don't like that's not on their their concept plan?
Yeah, so the 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 thing that gives us comfort with this is the development agreement. Uh the development agreement ties in. A lot of these points you're talking about, specifically the open space and trail along the river. Um the uses within the buildings might change, the shapes of the building might change, the the layout of the parking lot may change. Nothing substantial is the way the the wording in the development agreement sits. Um so it'd be something similar to this with the kind of interior details. Uh but the things that are most protected in the the former development agreement. The one that's adopted on the west side and the one we'd expect to be kind of copied over to this, because it's the same applicant. Is is those those amenities, those open space amenities and trails.
I think the thing that, the one thing that keeps me from just saying, yeah, this is the same project, of course, I'm gonna say yes, is because it feels like it's more intense. They had more parking than was required last time they came to us and now they're at potentially going to need a parking reduction. And so I'm one wondering if the scale of the buildings is just such that it seems much different than the last.
Yeah, the scale of the buildings have de- have definitely changed. Um where that large building in the middle uh sits right now in front of you. There were two buildings separated uh by additional parking lot and landscaping. Um so yeah, that that element has changed between the two concepts and it could change again by the time they get to the project plan, honestly.
And the height has, has it been two stories the whole time or has it gotten higher also?
The height's been the two stories um, the two story in scope, but not a true two-story building. Uh just a high ceiling, right? Typical warehouse style. Um but that itself is limited by the zone code. It doesn't have to be part of the development agreement, so the the zone code will limit that height.
Are there any landscaping plans? This doesn't show anything here. This is just.
No, not at concept level, um but they would have to meet the landscape standards, much like you've seen on on other developments in there.
Can you describe what that might feel like?
Um do you recall the McCord warehouses just to the southeast of this?
Mm-hmm.
On the island.
I just don't remember.
It'd be similar to that. It's pretty intense, especially on the frontage on Center Street, that's a design corridor. So there's pretty intense uh tree counts and shrub counts. Uh that would come in with that.
So we're really not getting a scope of what it would look like just by seeing these.
Not seeing that.
Footprints here, okay. Thank you.
Uh Commissioner Hill?
A couple of questions just to follow up. Um one of the letters asked about the trees along the river. Do you know what plans there are for those?
I don't specifically. Um I I would assume if those, because those are areas are staying green, open space. They would want to preserve any healthy, good trees that they could. Uh that would just make sense to enhance that the element. Um but specifics, I wouldn't know at this point.
Okay, the other one I have is, there is actually a park going in. On the other side of Lakeview Parkway, there's a trail that comes out of that to Lakeview Parkway and there is a passage underneath. There, will this trail system connect into that trail?
It it won't have a direct connection, right? You'd have to jump up on the bridge, come back down and around.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there is a tunnel underneath.
Oh, I see what you're saying. On the east side of the river, that the Ford River subdivision has agreed to a. I think a gravel trail.
Yes.
Along the river through their development plan. Uh there would be a natural, a natural connection there. I don't know what that ends up ends up looking like.
I just think it might be nice for people in this neighborhood to have, you know, a running trail they can get to on foot, and so having that connected in would be very nice.
I thi- I think that would make sense.
I have a question, what um is on the east side across from this? What's the zone?
That is a R one eight zone, I believe.
And is it going like what, is that the future?
Yeah, that is. So they're they're phasing those Ford River subdivisions right now. Um so that's kind of be. A a typical eight thousand square foot subdivision.
Wh- which, where is that going, you said?
Uh just along.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
These properties here.
Gotcha, yeah.
And then the park is right where it says three oh one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a city park. You can see that under construction right now and then trails connect to the actual Provo River Trail. And then this developer has agreed to do a gravel connection along their property that they own.
Yeah, Commissioner De Soto?
I was gonna say, it makes me feel better that there's houses around. I know people were concerned about what happens like at night in these empty spaces, but. I think the fact that there's um there are people, you know, right there, um people who will be. Um and you know, they'll have an incentive for their own, you know, neighborhood to take care of things. Like it's a good thing.
Yeah, eyes, eyes on the area definitely helps and I'll be interested to see when the project plan comes through, the lighting plan to to see how they handle that.
Are they um? A couple of questions is, what's the distance between that, like the? The furthest building to the right and the corner of the river, like?
Yeah, that's on the tightest point.
Yeah, the tightest point.
It's between probably forty and fifty feet. There's a required forty foot easement through there. It looks like it's a bit off of that, so I'd say probably between forty and fifty five-ish.
Okay, and then um you said the the lighting plan, are there, are, what are the lighting requirements for this area?
I I didn't mean to mention that in the concept plan level.
Well, I was actually curious.
Yeah, yeah, through the project plan, uh there's there's lighting element standards in in fifteen point two one Provo City Code. Uh that that designate how intense lighting can be centrally and as you get to the periphery. Um that that we review through project plans.
Okay, and then uh the, that's right next to the class ropes thing, is that, is this? Just adjacent, is it, is that, is or is it on that property?
It's it's directly adjacent to the ropes.
Okay, got it.
Well, not the property we're talking about tonight, right? Because that's the other half of it.
Yeah, the one that's already zoned Airport Industrial, but this is all, yeah, got it. Anyone else have any questions for?
Mr. Armoir?
Alright, I think you're good, thank you. Uh we'd like to invite the applicant Eric Jurgensen uh to come forward and as a reminder, you'll have fifteen minutes to make your presentation. And if you go longer, you will ding, you'll get dinged.
Don't want to get dinged. Um I'm Eric Jurgensen. Nice to see you again. Uh so the second time I've been here. Um Aaron, of course, has done a really good job of describing the project. Uh to be honest with you, I really don't need to to add to what he said. Um but I'll answer questions if you have questions.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
Do you have plans for for landscaping along the river frontage specifically?
We would, we would um comply with with the Provo City ordinances and code, absolutely.
Uh one question I have is. One question I have is just more curiosity than anything. What, why is this the second time? What happened with the last round?
So I'm, I'm not the same developer that brought in the previous application. And he, as Aaron said, he couldn't close on the property.
Oh, got it. Okay. But then is that still pending this time around?
Pending.
Closing the property?
No, we have, we have a tenant for the three hundred thousand square foot building.
Okay.
And so they're anxiously wanting us to start.
Got it.
And then the one hundred thousand square foot building, which is to the east, we will submit at the same time and build that at the same time. So essentially, building one and building two will go in the near term. And then building three would be down the line.
Cool. Does anyone else have any questions? Commissioner Kendall?
Can we keep those trees along the Provo River? Is that, have you looked at it? In the construction, is it, are you able to keep those trees?
So I'm going to be very politically correct in telling you this. We love trees. I love trees. Everybody loves trees, right? A lot of those trees are junk trees. They're cottonwood trees, and if you've lived in the neighborhood with cottonwood trees, it snows in June, it snows in July, but it causes you know, problems with, with breathing and so forth. I live in an area where I've had that problem as well. But we have committed to the trail along that south side of the Provo River. So it's gonna again pass, or we are going to submit landscaping drawings that will you know, conform to the, to the regulations here in Provo City. But if you look at a lot of the trees, they're on the the sides of the banks, some of them are even, you know, kind of going into the river. It's not really the river now, but I guess you can call that. And so a lot of them do have to go.
Any other questions?
I was gonna ask how, what you want to say to convince the people who think this is a bad idea. There's a lot of public comment that we've received that, that feels like this is a poor use of the land and bad development choices. And I just wondered if you had something that would convince them that you're going to bless them with your presence.
My presence?
Speaking generically of the development.
Well, first off, it complies with the, with the general plan to support the airport. And as all of us are aware, the magnitude and the expansion of the Provo Airport and how everyone in Utah County loves the Provo Airport, including my wife. She doesn't like to fly out of Salt Lake anymore. Comes down and goes to the Provo Airport, so it is, is definitely added to the, to the airport. And it obviously will create employment in, in the area and quite a bit of employment. So we all have to work, survive. And it will create, it will create jobs for Provo City.
Would you be willing to share the tenant and what kind of how it supports the airport?
The tenant is fine with me sharing who the tenant is because I've, I've actually talked to the tenant. That's a company called Wasatch Product Development. They are owned by New Skin. And so they will, they are the tenant for the three hundred thousand square foot building.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we will now open the hearing to public comments. We'd like to invite the neighborhood, any neighborhood district chairs to come forward if you would like to comment. You'll have three minutes, and please remember to state your name for the record.
My name is Andrew Terry. I'm the District Three Chair. And as you probably know, we got higher than usual amount of public input on this one. There were a lot of people that were concerned with this development going in by the river. Some of that is just fueled by the overall condition of this portion of the river, right? The new Provo River Delta has taken some of the flow, and so this portion of the river currently is kind of neglected. So the community is feeling some of that, and they really wish to see the river preserved and access to the river preserved in any way possible. There was concern as well just about the Airport Industrial Zone crossing over to the other side of Center Street. This is kind of like the only section where that is allowed. There was, let me see what else I took notes on. There was concern, it just about the warehouses and how close they were there to the Provo River Trail, even that nature trail. And there was concerns that we'd like to see that setback a little bit more or more commitment to putting in trees, try to preserve some of the more natural feel. I did try myself going out there to see what it was like in terms of airport noise. So I went out this morning, and I do think it's probably a little too noisy for a residential area. That's just my personal opinion. There may be other people that would be comfortable living there, but I do understand why industrial use might be appropriate here. Yeah, I think that was the majority of the input we got. I would say just personally, I've seen in other areas that residential also doesn't give you guaranteed access. There's a lot of trails in St. George where residential communities came against the trails, and then it kind of became a gated community, and you couldn't access it anymore. So I'm hopeful that with a proper guidelines in place, a residential place might actually enhance the, the trail access, I think, similar to like the word perfect area of the Murdoch Canal. That section through word perfect, I think, is better than some of the sections where you just see people's fences. So I think if we do it right, we might be able to still preserve some of the great natural resource that we have there, but that's my feedback.
Thank you. We will now open the hearing to the general public. If you have a comment, please feel free to come forward.
Hi, my name's Lysandra Harker. You might have seen it around. I am a resident of West Provo. And I do have major concerns with this development specifically going all the way to Lakeview Parkway, not least of which is because the new Delta Park is less than a quarter of a mile from here. You can, you can see this site from the new playground that they're installing currently today. As well, I also have concerns about the loss of trees. I grew up in the land of trees in Pennsylvania. I know that I don't live in Pennsylvania anymore. I am a Utah resident. However, if you look at this from a bird's eye view on Google Maps, for example, this is the only area for miles where the trees are dense enough to be seen on that map. Although they have been referred to as trash trees or messy trees, and I agree with whatever plans we have to not encourage people to plant more of these trees, they are also an established, mature set of trees that home bald eagles during the winter. They home owls. They are well enjoyed by the north side of the river with all of the trail users that are there morning and noon and night. So there is a substantial concern as we've seen with Walmart progressing through their development steps. I believe that they'll follow the ordinances and the, the rules that the city has laid down. There are not rules to preserve these trees. There are not rules if that makes sense. So I have extreme concern with that and the direction it takes the city, as well as the residential island that is left dwarfed by these large, large warehouses, as well as, somebody mentioned criminal activity. Warehouses themselves don't increase criminal activity, but only when they're next to residential areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Leilani Kits. I live along Lake Shore Drive. As a resident, this is my first time seeing this. It feels very shocking. I've lived here for seven years. I walk the Provo River Trail daily. Those trees are the only shade trees that we have around. So the new trail does not have any shade and this is going to be our first summer with the new trail, and there's not the shade there that that we enjoy with the existing. Also, as the previous person mentioned, the birders and the natural wildlife there, those are native trees to that area. And as part of living next to the lake, we tried to preserve the, the native species there. And the residents love the trees in my neighborhood. That's a place that we, we often go. See what else they had to say. Yeah, it does just feel very different. I think encroaching onto the, the natural preserve we have, the neighborhood, a lot of the airport thing, especially with the noise, that there's a lot of noise just in my home with helicopters, airplanes. I hear that frequently already. So that is a concern for me. And if there is any way that we could, you know, have both with preserving on the south side, the industrial and being able to keep the feel and enjoyment of the natural preserve and, and that type of, in our community would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. My name is Matt. I, I don't have anything rehearsed, but I'm, I'm here, so.
Can you say where you live, just for the record, please?
I live in the, I don't know what you call the neighborhood, the.
Provo is fine.
I live in Provo.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Matt Todd. So I will echo what these other people have said about the trail. I think shade is huge. The river's awesome. I mean, the Murdoch Trail is two hundred degrees. And the other rivers around are a lot muddier. They're not as cool. The Provo River and the Provo River Trail is awesome. And I love what's been happening to it. And we've seen great things going on the Delta Park on that new trail there. Me and my wife and daughter over there run or walk or ride bikes on it pretty much every day. And it's awesome. We love it. And I think I'm just concerned as well about the green space and the wild space. And I think it's critical to keep. I think a lot of people live in Provo because of what we've done with the River Trail and with the parks. I don't think anyone lives in Provo because they like the warehouses. So I think, I think we just need to keep in mind what's important. The junk trees, I'm not the biggest fan of cottonwoods either, but by the time we plant a new tree, that's not a junk tree, and it grows to the size of these, everyone in this room will be dead. So I think it's something worth holding on to. I'm just really surprised that the easement is so small or that the setback is so small on this building. I worked for a builder and we've had to stay a hundred feet around, a hundred feet away from some canal in Bluffdale before. And to be this close with the warehouses is really, I think maybe uncharacteristic of what I'm used to seeing. So especially for something so important to the community, so. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Halliday. I live in one of those houses right there on the twenty-five acres. That's the west of this project. I just want to comment on these trees that they're talking about. All through the summer, my garage will literally be a foot full of cotton. You have to vacuum it out about every three weeks. And the River Trail up there for the last half a dozen years, somebody's been lighting it, lighting it on fire. And the fire department, the police department have tried to find out who it is because it just goes like, you know, like cotton. Besides the trees, half of them on our, around the dyke, they, they're not just growing straight up. They're not healthy trees. They're coming out. Most of them are coming out like this and bending up. Brats is falling off. There just, there wasn't a tree there until nineteen eighty-three, when the Corps of Engineers built the dyke up, and then they all just grew. They're pot, they're poplars and cottonwoods. They're just junk trees. But I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Stacy Halliday, Chris's wife. I live in the same area he lives in, obviously. But I just want to comment on the trees as well and the trail. So the trees that, any trees that they would take out would be on our side of the property, on the south side of the river. That would not affect any of the trees over by the trail. The trail's on the other side of the river, trees on both sides of the trail, on our side of the property. It wouldn't even affect the trail whatsoever, the trees. All the trees would still be there, every tree. So, and the river is no longer a river. It's a swamp. So the river that used to be there is gone. It's all on the delta side now. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Halliday. I live in thirty-four sixty west center, one of the homes there. So these other two that were up here are my brother and sister-in-law. Together with my wife, we farm that area. And because of the insurance we have to hold for the property, reliability, they told us that we could not allow people to walk along the river for safety purposes. And so nobody walks along the south side of the river. Nobody gets up there because we can't allow it. Also, the trees, like they said, they're diseased trees, and they come out of the side of the dyke, and we have them tip over into the property. And we have to go up and clean them up. So the trees need to be cleared and good trees put in that will be healthy and be aesthetic to the area and pleasing so that they don't drop all that cotton and cause all the problems that they do. We have to clean our condensers out for air conditioners every month because of all the the cotton that comes off of it and ends up in our condensers around our houses. I sat on the planning, what do they call it, Jonathan, west side?
The West Side Land Use Map Committee.
We sat on that committee, and we discussed all the property from where Walmart's going in all the way down and around the west side. And it was determined that the best use of that property was for airport-related type buildings to go in there. And so that was, I mean, you guys or someone before you decided that that was the best use, and it went through all the way through the council.
Just, can you finish the thought?
Yeah, so it's, it's imperative that we understand that that's the best use because I live there and there's three hundred cars that go down that road at six-thirty in the morning until seven-thirty, and three hundred cars that come back up for Dunkin Aviation. It's, it's getting rough to live there. And the noise, it's, it's not useful for that to be homes in that area. The best use is the development that needs to go in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Halliday, the last of the Hallidays. I just want to address some of the comments made by some of the people who live in the area about keeping open ground. And what people have to understand is that, guess what? All of your ground at one time was farm ground. All of your ground at one time was farm ground. All the way up. And yes, we enjoy the openness, but there comes a time when it's time to move on. And how would you guys feel if you were in this predicament and you had to go to. A planning commission, a neighborhood meeting, city council and get everything approved just to sell and move away? You wouldn't like it. You wouldn't like it to have to have all these people. Get to tell you what you get to do with the property that you own. And so I just want people to understand that you have to give property owners the chance to move on and. Retire and do things that we've never been able to do because we have been tied to this ground. Our family has owned this for over eighty years and we have worked this ground as a farm all of these years. And it's time to move on. It's time to, for things to change. Change is inev- inevitable. This will never stay farm ground the whole. Duration of everybody's lives. It's just not feasible. And so I just want people to understand that you have to give the owners grace for what they want to do with their lives and not expect them to maintain this their entire life. Because you want some open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I was gonna do that, but if you want to do it, you're welcome to.
Go ahead.
You, you're better than me at it, Aaron.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Emily Ibarra. I just live over by Exchange Park and I take the trail down to this area like. Depending on the season, like every other day probably. Um, and I think it's mainly the, that. The area to the north is just so focused as recreational space and so, and because. It makes a whole loop from the Delta Project, like more people are going to be using this trail than ever, even though it does. It's not super well-maintained, this area they're talking about and they're like, it's junk, it's a swamp or whatever. And I mean, it's, there's justification for that, but I go there and I think it's really beautiful anyways and. The more that people use it, the more justification there is for Provo City to take more care of the trail and um. And if there's trees that need to be removed because they're hazards, like that can be taken care of, the more that people use it, which. We haven't been able to see how much use there will be because the Delta Project just opened, but um. So I just think there's potential for it to be really beautiful and really well-used. And so the warehouses being there just seem. Like they're encroaching on that recreational space, which is just, it's like Central Park in New York City. Like we just don't have it here. And so we have warehouses, we have residential areas and I don't know if more residential. I think since there is residential just being developed across Lakeview Parkway, it seems as though the sound from the airport, it. I think I would be possibly willing to live there, just because I love that area. Um, but uh, yeah, so. Just being concerned about the industrial um, moving and encroaching on that recreational space. And the high school, the residential, it just doesn't seem to make sense for that section of the city. And um. Lastly, just wondering if it's possible for there to be an easement, like a large easement that the city owns that goes up to the river. I'm not saying that the warehouses can't be used at all or done at all, but.
Thank you. Mr. Armar.
Alright, I just want to summarize the, the public comments that came through email. Uh, Ethan Johnson is the first. He says, don't build warehouses. Uh, Provo River's last natural beauty, beautiful thing about the city. Um, but something else that are more beneficial. You've heard from Lisandra and Lillini, so I won't over summarize theirs. Uh, Melanie Consolo. Also says, please do not build warehouses by the river. Uh, just summarizing her concerns. Uh, you know, it's, it's the open space, it's the walkability, it's the place to take families. Uh, preventing shade, a lot of the things that I've been spoken about tonight. Uh, believe, she believes the warehouses by the Provo River is a all-around bad idea. Um, understands that the warehouse are intended to use, to be used for Provo Airport, but can't. The airport use warehouses that are built further away from the river. Uh, it doesn't, if that is not possible or practical, I would much rather have the Provo River be preserved than the airport be expanded. Um. And then she goes on to, to talk about her, her voting, so that, I'll just leave that out. Um, uh, then Paul Davis is the last email we received. Uh, he says, protect Provo River, please pre-reserve Provo River Delta. Do not develop it into a warehouse or commercial area. This area should be preserved for future generations. Uh, it's more valuable as a space to preserve nature than warehouse space that can be created anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further commenters, we will now close public comments and have a discussion among the commission, commissioners. Commissioner Shin, oh, Commissioner South, you've been quiet. Let's hear.
Um, maybe Mr. Armar can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think the area just north of that river is part of the. Despain Ranch and will not be, it's going to be continued uh, perpetually as open space, right? So from the, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just on record, yes, that is part of the Despain Ranch. It's also in the county. It's not part of the city.
Right.
Uh, but there is a perpetual easement over that land, yeah.
So it seems to me that um. I, I've just been reviewing our rivers and lakeshore plan again and looking at some of, you know, what we've been trying to do from a bigger picture. And I think preserving areas where we can keep uh, you know, space wild and, and keep access to Provo. We can't do it for everything everywhere. Um, I think this is some good planning as well, much like the discussion we had um, about the previous item. I think this actually represents a pretty decent uh, balance. We've got this really interesting island of ground between center and the river there. Beyond that is all of our preserved open space. This right here isn't necessarily suitable for residential. Because of the noise and things, uh, everything south of it's going to uh, be able to service the airport. Just seems like that river actually makes a pretty nice break and we still are preserving access to it because of the trail that's on that north side. That's part of the. Rivers and, and lakeshore plan. So it seems to me that trying to. Uh, we are striking the best of both worlds by trying to provide an opportunity for landholders to get value out of their land. Um, buffer the, you know, the open space that's going to be beyond it and we still have our residential uh, to the east, so. Um, that can be difficult when you're looking at a very specific piece of ground, but if you look at the, you know, the slightly larger view. I think we're doing a pretty good job here of trying to, to find those balances, so. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner South. Commissioner Soto?
I'm just gonna say, I agree generally. I, I do think that um, looking at the. Um, the easements requirements are the, I guess. Yeah, the buffer requirements would be good for the future and also maybe recommendations for um. Native, like when we, it's, it, when it, there are instances when there needs to be replacement of vegetation in, in an area where we want to keep native. Things um, growing, you know, um, because I do think that. I, I, cottonwoods are junk trees in the sense of if you want to profit off of the wood, but for habitat, they're not. Um, anyway, so some, something that we could think about in the future. I also would, I mean, I do think generally this is fun, but I do think it, it does get really, really close and it's to the. To the views that you would otherwise have. Um, I just would like to see a little bit more buffer space between the. Just a little, you know, maybe another twenty feet or something, but it's a small thing.
Commissioner Hill?
So just a couple of comments I want to do here. Um, as Mr. Halliday commented, we both sat on the land use committee that, that made this map and. This was an area that was talked about quite a bit on that committee. Uh, residential was on here at one point and it was changed away from it uh, because there became some concerns. Um, and noise was one of them. Um, unlike the neighborhoods to either side, this is directly under one of the. Flight paths for the runways, which is much louder than it is even a little bit off to the side. But there were others as well. Um, one was that because Lakeview Parkway is such a big road. Uh, it kind of cuts it off from the rest of the neighborhoods and it felt like it was going to be a little island. And that across Center Street from that island was going to be industrial anyway. And so we felt like Lakeview Parkway and the river created kind of a nice. Boundary to, to surround the airport industrial zone, if that makes sense. Um, because they would create that larger, the larger spacing between the two. Um, and another one was uh, essentially some feedback from a developer that. Uh, because of the flight path and stuff, you'd have to use special materials in some of the homes for soundproofing, et cetera. Uh, so there was a discussion for uh, affordable housing, which I think was mentioned in one of the latter, letters as well. And that was ruled out because of that and a lack of amenities and public transit options, et cetera, out in this area. And so. We looked at lots of different options and this is what we settled on as the best option for this area.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Uh, Commissioner Jensen?
Um, question for Mr. Day, maybe. Are there any plans to increase the river flow at all? I know we've talked about this before with um, the river being diverted to the Delta Project. Is that a, I thought I remembered someone telling us that there was a plan to continue sending some of this, the water down. The original trail, but is, is the plan to dry it up and reroute it completely?
No, part of, part of the commitment from the Department of the Interior was to keep about ten CFS. The water running down that river. Um. That's like a small ditch, so it, they have aeration system in it to try to keep it from going stagnant. Um. I'm not sure how well that's working. They're still experimenting with that, but if you compare that ten CFS to the Provo River that runs it. You know, upwards of two thousand CFS in the, in the spring runoff. Um, that's just a trickle.
It seems like it would be very difficult to keep the water flowing.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but that, that commitment is to always have that flow going down through there, so it'll, it'll. Be in this semi-stagnant condition for, forever.
And if it is proven to not be adequate flow, they are not responsible to raise the flow at all?
That, they're trying to keep it alive by having an aeration system. They have air uh. Lines that go down into the water and bubble up.
It just seems like it's probably.
Fish tank.
Yeah.
Right? Um, trying to keep it alive. Um, I'm not sure. If that doesn't work, if they're willing to put more water down it, we've never talked about that, so I can't answer that.
Okay. Um, my other questions, uh, before I throw out my discussion items are um. For Mr. Ardmore, thank you. Um, if the code allows a forty-foot setback. That's what, that's the, what they're required, do we have any authority to say, would you be willing to make it more?
Uh, of course you could say it that way. You could say, would you be willing to make it more? Uh, there's, there's no uh, duty. From the developer to do that.
Okay.
So they're meeting the minimum standard, yes.
Okay, my second is um, related to the, if the river flow is such that it's not really a river anymore. Then does the river and lakeshore map need to be amended so that it follows the new alignment of the river instead of. The original course of the river, so that that development area that we're protecting is not the swamp, but actually the river itself?
I think, I think that's an interesting question. I think my answer is kind of twofold. One, I don't anticipate that ever. Being able to dry up because of the commitment from the, the federal government on that. Um, but also as it, the new river uh, flows to the Delta. Almost a hundred percent of that new area is in the county and not in the city. Uh, so the, the city wouldn't have any regulatory authority on what happens around it, uh, unless it was annexed.
Okay, I just um. I just worry about the message that we do send and I know we struggled with this the first time we addressed this. Um, idea, but. How does the decision to rezon these spaces align with this river and lakeshore plan and how do we justify? Um, when the river and lakeshore plan was being written, we talked a lot about um. The recreational aspect and economic aspect and um, uh, environmental aspect of, of these places and how we wanted to protect them. Yet also promote them as places that people could go. So I feel like this development promotes it as a place that people can go because it gives access where there wasn't any before. Um, but does it preserve it? Does it um, mask the appearance of?
I think, I think you've got, I think you've got um, all those elements in this area. I think, as was noted, the north side of this river in this area. Is going to maintain a recreational, open uh, nature feel. Um, and that's, those are elements in the, in the Provo River plan. Uh, but so is economic development. Um, and when we identified those areas for uh, building against river. We made a point to write in that plan, we shouldn't put our backs to the river on future development. Uh, so we've tried to be careful about that with this proposal and, and making sure there's area protected there and even amenitized. So I, I think, I think this is hitting a lot of the points of the Provo, Provo River.
Does it, um, are there specific requirements, design requirements that this project would be subject to because of that? Rivers and Lakeshore Plan and any design corridor that might be on Center Street?
Yeah, design corridor on Center Street will definitely come into play. Um, the, the plan, the river and lakeshore plan is more of a uh, visionary document. There's no regulatory function of that. Uh, but we still, we try to respect that and, and match it as a adopted plan of our department.
Um, so what sort of design requirements would the West Center Street Design Quarter?
West Center Street requires a, a larger setback off of Center Street with a, a bermed landscaped island. Uh, with tree, uh, increased tree and, and shrub counts within that.
So the visibility of a large warehouse will be dampened by?
It'd be minimized. Uh, the, the best example of it currently existing is probably in front of the Family Dollar. So if you can imagine uh, that, that berm that they landscaped and, and at large rocks and shrubs and.
Not a very convincing example, Aaron.
It's a very small example. I think is the, 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 the scale of it doesn't really get you there, but it, it gives you the, the, the depth of it, right? It gives you the depth and the berming, uh, an idea of what that would look like.
Are there any requirements that um, require landscaping to replace trees when you take mature trees out or is that just something you hope people care about?
It, it is a should, not a shall in the code. It says that we should preserve uh, existing trees when. Uh, the opportunity arises, it's not a shall.
Okay.
Yeah, like. Um, note to replace this mic at some point, please. Um, the indicator light is broken. So the thing that I'm curious about, it's fuzzy to me is, so if this gets rezoned and. This project goes forward, is there any obligation on behalf of the developer to actually re-vegetate the area facing the river?
Um, only, only what's committed to in the development agreement. So yes, there is. Uh, they have to provide those open spaces as shown in the concept plan. And uh, any other uh, kind of written detail about those areas in the development agreement. Um, so yes, there will be the commitments and uh, follow-through on those issues.
I think you might be asking more than just the open space, but like tree planting, right?
Vegetation.
Oh, existing trees?
No, not existing tree, because obviously he's going to tear down the trees. We, they're junk trees, as we've heard. What I'm curious about is replanting the area next to the, and I'll put quotes because I know there's debatable around the river.
So yeah, so there's a, there's a tree per acre requirement with this development. Uh, uh, it'd be wise to put a number of those required trees in that area uh, to. To open up the rest of the site for buildings and parking and so forth. So I imagine that would happen naturally.
Okay. Did you have questions for Mr. Armar?
Oh, no, I just had some thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Armar.
Thank you, yeah.
Commissioner Shin?
Yeah, I just, I think I, I, I have, I don't know, I have some mixed feelings, you know. Split on, on, on some of these, these details and I'm trying to, trying to think through and work through what the, you know, what the. What, what, what I'm feeling, what might be ways to reconcile those, those things, you know? Um, I think we, we obviously, we, we value the, you know, we want to help the property owner to get value out of their land as they, as they leave it. Um. We want to enhance the airport. We want to do things that are going to be more economically productive for the city. Um, now, on the other hand, uh, I think, and the reason I think we're having this conversation is because this, this property does a butt onto this. This riverfront or whatever you want to call what's, what's left of the river. Um. But you know, it, it's like I, in my time living in Provo, I've lived nearby the river. Or worked, you know, nearby the river and just been. or worked, you know, nearby the river and just been close to those, those riverfront areas for a lot of the time I've lived here, many of the years. Uh, I've, I've spent time on the river trails we have here. Um, we, my wife and I currently live just very close to the river and we intentionally uh found a place that would, would let us get access to the trails and be, and be very close there, which we, we appreciate a lot. Um, and so I think like, you know, a, a, as you walk on the river trail and, and see the, the places that we have in the city, you know, there's there's, there's a lot of, a lot of the river trail, especially as it goes through kind of middle of town, through the, you know, the Cardville area where, you know, unfortunately, I think there's, in the past, we haven't really made it a priority to, to think of that as an asset. You know, like, you, you walk on the trail and it feels kind of, you know, it, it's, you're walking past like the Walgreens pharmacy drive-through on the one side and the, there's a self-storage, you know, like, you know, facility on the other side and it just, it feels unwelcoming and it feels like just un, you know, unwelcoming to be there as a pedestrian. I, I, it's unfortunate, you know? Um, I think it's, there are unfortunately few places that we really kind of have prioritized as a city to be like real places that you want to spend time on the river. Um, much of it is just private access, you know, it goes to the golf course, goes through a lot of backyards and, and, and the spaces that are not, you know, are not just you know, inaccessible are, you know, th- there's only so much that we really, you know, there's only so many places we really try to make nice on the river that really are like for people to come to. And, and so that's, that's, I think, why I'm, I, I want to, you know, I want to kind of think this through, but like, um, you know, we only have one river. Um, and if you get rid of that, you can't really get it, get it back. Now, that said, this is kind of a, there is a, the, the wrinkle to that, obviously, is that this is not really where the river proper is anymore, right? It's kind of this, the trickle, maybe is what it is now and, you know, Lakeview Parkway is there and obviously the nuisance with the planes going overhead and the airport has kind of made this, it's not, you know, we're not gonna have people like living here. It's, it's not gonna be the same as that, as we've discussed, right? We understand that that's not really, you know, it's not really getting practical. Um, I think that we've, you know, I'm, I'm really glad that we have this new River Delta project. I need to get there and see that myself, but I, I'm glad that we are like, we have that there. Um, I am like just thinking about the trail access and, and, and what's going on down there. And I think what I'm, what I'm coming to is I just wonder like, you know, it, it feels to me unfortunate that we, you know, you would have an outdoor space with, with some nature and with some stuff that's, that isn't many and just have, you know, parking lot right backed up onto it. Um, as was, uh, you know, remarked on earlier, like in other places, there's, there's often setbacks and we, you know, uh, you know, forty, I think we were saying like what, forty feet or so, it feels like it's not a lot of, not a lot of space um, just to kind of leave from, from that, that warehouse parking lot field right up onto what might be, you know, what could be like an asset and a you know, a, a place that people actually currently are in, are using and enjoying to stay. Now, I, you know, I'm, I'm not, I find it hard to to reconcile that, or I'm trying to reconcile that with the fact that we don't want to put more hardship on those, on the property owners. We don't want to make unreasonable demands and this has been discussed before and we're not, you know, I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't sit right to try to come and, and, and change things, or try to throw a wrench in things at the last minute again. I'm wondering if there's just like, are there, are there small things we could do that might be able to, without being a huge burden on any, you know, on either side of this, make things a little bit more, you know, better assurances or just a little bit of a nicer environment on that side of, you know, of, of the river. Does that, does that make sense? I think that's, that's where I'm sitting and I, I, I would love to hear if there's any other thoughts on that. Just, does that resonate? Am I, am I off base?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kendall, do you have some thoughts?
Well, I agree. I mean, sure, we want to do our very best, but I, I think that, I, I would echo what Andrew said um about, this actually does strike a pretty good balance. And if they are required to put those trees up and the incentive naturally will be to put them in that area so that they have more free space, you know, around the buildings, I think it's going to naturally be great and I think it will improve the area significantly. And trees, there are trees that grow faster and um there will be trees still on the other side. So it's not going to be completely treeless. And um, yeah, it's, it's, it's just one of those pieces of property where it's, it's difficult and I think you, you all did a good job trying to come up with the best solution. So part of that property is already zoned. We're kind of, you know, this is it. So I feel like we've done a good job of trying to make a balance both and, and I feel much more comfortable knowing that there, there is a path on the north side. So they are separated by the river as well. So not only do you have the natural setback that, that we see on the um project plan, but the river itself or the ditch.
We prefer to call it the trickle.
Uh, there's a word in English called stream and creek. Does that, are those appropriate? I don't know.
I think it's too small for those.
Even too small for those? Uh, you have something, Commissioner?
Yeah, so I asked my questions earlier, but these are the things I would just like to throw out for discussion as we're trying to come to a conclusion. I feel like um, this project isn't removing any access to the river or shade that currently exists. I feel like it's actually adding more. Yes, it's going to remove some trees, but I don't believe that affects the trail because of the separation by the river. Um, there's some pretty unsightly things that you see on the south side of the river all the way along. And I feel like this is going to be better than some of those. Um, not perfect, but I think the buffer would, would be a, a nice addition and I appreciate that they're willing to offer that. Um, so I don't have a problem with the rezone due to the, the process and the previous decisions that have been made um with the general plan and the other zone changes. I think I'm fine with the rezone. I'm maybe not fine with the density of this project compared to the last time we saw it. I feel like, especially if they would need a parking reduction eventually, I don't know if I would be willing to do that. So the two questions that I have as I'm making this decision are, would I be okay with any parking reduction in the future? Um, and is Lakeway, Lakeview Parkway a sufficient buffer between these uses? And I appreciated um Mr. Hill's comments about the enormity of that street that has sort of created a natural buffer. That makes me feel like someone thought about that before I did. Um, I don't think I'd be okay with a parking reduction just because it's a huge warehouse. Unless somebody said they were only manufacturing and there were, you know, twenty people there or whatever. I don't know. That would take some convincing for me, but I think I think I'm okay with the idea of this type of project. I'm okay with the rezone. I'm not sure I'm okay with the, with the number um, the, the size of it of the, the buildings.
On the parking reduction question, uh, I don't know that I can share much without, you know, seeing a justification, but I do, I am a little concerned about how some of these um spaces are being used as kind of quasi-retail and so that does require uh parking. And so even if it was going to be manufacturing only, we're going to lease out these bays for that. You know, that changes and so once it's gone, it's gone. So, you know, we, I, I personally, I'd have to see something, but um but I'm not, yeah, i- if, if they can fit all of that on that property with the requirements that we have, I'm, I'm supportive, fully supportive. I'm not sure that I would be really excited about parking reductions.
Are we, we're not talking about parking right now. This is just to let them change the zone and then see if they could meet those requirements. And then they can try and get, I suppose, um, ask us for a parking reduction. Okay.
Now it come in the project plan approval phase? Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask, is the overall square feet of warehouse space the same between the old project and this project? How much more increased are we?
I don't, I don't have the numbers with me from last time, uh, between this, the concepts, I mean. Um, it, it is, it is increased, uh, but again, we're, we're dealing with a concept plan that just helps the commission, the council get an idea of what the zone change could bring. Um, those details, as I noted in the staff report, would be brought out through project plan uh where we drill down on uses and what the parking is required for each use based on square footage.
Okay, because before it was four buildings.
Correct.
So it seems like it's not, can't be that much different.
It's not too much more, honestly. Uh, they squished the two middle buildings together and, and took some parking away from the middle, so it'd be slightly larger, is my guess.
All right, Commissioners, I'm hearing, um, yeah, well, how are we feeling?
Maybe since the requirements would be ironed out in the project plan phase, the things that we are concerned about aren't actually concerns at this point. I think the biggest concern that we heard from the public are things that we've all worked through and we're okay with those. We're more concerned about potential parking, potential uses, potential building sizes that we aren't actually giving the official thumbs up to, right?
I think that's more of a courtesy to the applicant, so he kind of knows, you know, looking forward.
Do we, if that's a big enough concern that we're like, hey, these are too big, we don't, we're worried about the size or scale of this, is it not good to say we approve the zone change? And then do we approve the concept plan and then say, but these are our concerns, so you better watch out? Or like, how does that work?
I think the latter is more appropriate, I think, um, because one of these actions with the, the rezone, of course, is a recommendation to the council. I think noting what those concerns would be if this was to move forward is important for both the applicant, um, but also for the council to be aware.
Would we give those concerns at the zone change? Um, for item two, or would we give them for both?
Because they won't see it, council won't see item three.
Okay.
Mr. Ardmore, does item three, if, if we recommend approval of this concept plan, it says above to provide over fifty-eight, five hundred and eighty thousand square feet of new flex warehouse? So does that mean that we're approving that much?
So you're, you're, you're approving uh the concept, right? So it's essentially it's saying we're okay with what this zone could bring. Um, so that sticks with the planning commission, the council doesn't see that, so it's not a recommendation. It's, we approve the concept, you can deny the concept and the zone change can still move forward and be approved uh because the project plan comes back and satisfies the zone.
But an approval of a, of the, of the concept plan also is assuming that all of the current regulations and rule statutes are adhered to, right? Which is going to come back later.
Correct.
So I think what Ms. Kendall's asking is that it's not implying a hundred percent guarantee that you can build five hundred and eighty thousand square feet of warehouse space, right?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. I uh, just, I'll share a couple of thoughts. Um, I uh totally uh hear what the owners of this property are saying. I would love them to have an amazing retirement and I know it's, you know, they own, they've owned this property for a long time and have, private property rights are really important to me. Um, at the same time, also hear from the community, it's a, it's a community asset and people have concerns. And so I think trying to find the right balance of those is important and part of why we are all serving here. So I mean, given the context that you gave Commissioner Hill, that this is uh very in line with the plan, kind of the deliberate plan and there's probably not a better use of the land. Like it's, you know, if this was housing, I think we'd be, you know, this would be done by now. But, but to your point, people don't want to live here probably and there's concerns to meet sound requirements and stuff like that, given that it's right in the flight path. So I think given those considerations, the thing that I would potentially like to encourage is ensuring trees are next to the river, which is interesting because like we have the design standards that are gonna force it on Center Street, but not necessarily on the river. And I think that's important for those who are enjoying all the investments that are happening on the north, you know, that lots of stuff has gone into that Delphway Park and there's a park going there and I think sort of being able to cover the, you know, the visibility of these very kind of like uh, I'd say austere and kind of commanding structures would be helpful and I think it'd be a service to the community. Um, and then also, yeah, the more easement, I think that's harder to ask for, but I, I would, I do just like hate how close that, that back road is to the river. Like it's, it just reminds me of what we did with the river, uh, the, the movie theaters up by the Riverwoods, where you're just like, this is the dumbest development I've ever seen. Um, and I, I just get mad every time I see that, but you're like, flip the movie theater around, like, move it back. It's just like, there's so much, it could be so much more about, so much better. Um, so anyway, that's my, those are my two points of concerns, like trees and the easements. But again, um, maybe we just pass those along as feedback to the, to the city council. But I think the project is in line and, and it should go forward and, and, and um, these folks should be allowed to sell their property.
What if we do like a preliminary list that we vote on of things that we care about enough that we would like to make sure that the property owner and the, the municipal council know that their thing, their kind of a wish list of what you just kind of listed, should we, is that useful? Or have we discussed?
Is there any, I don't think any other points have been made besides those two, right? Just the, those big ones.
The trees close to the river.
Just, yeah, having trees, you know, replace, if they're gonna take down all the trees, make sure that there's a replacement of the foliage, uh, at least to some degree and um, and potentially examine if there's any way to get and, and the easement one's a lot harder. It's a bigger ask because it changes the whole layout, so I, I, I'm not as strong as that one, on that one, but.
So is my concern about the buildings being too big, something that's not actually a concern because parking requirements will take care of that? Is that not something we need to pass along?
Is, are you concerned about the vertical height or the?
Both.
Oh.
I just, I think that's something we heard a lot from, from the neighborhood letters of just, these are big buildings and.
I don't think you're wrong. I just think it's hard to ask for that. It sort of feels a little bit out of
Well, that's what I'm saying is that because it's allowed by the, by right, if we approve the zone.
Yeah.
Then we just need to let the zoning requirements do their job to limit its intensity.
On that note, I just pulled up the parking study that they actually have in here with the concept plan. Um, and they are proposing far less than what is required, so.
Right, that's why I was worried about it. Like, I don't think I'm comfortable with what they're proposing compared to last time when they were required to have two hundred something and they were offering three hundred. So they've, they've flipped it and they have half the parking instead of
But just to be clear, that's not binding in any way then, if we approve it, okay?
And I would actually be fine, I would be a lot more comfortable with uh the parking reduction if there was more easement from the river. But I think the, sort of the lack of easement from the river and the parking reduction and massive austere buildings that they're asking for feels like a harder ask to me.
Mr. Ardmore, is that discussion adequate for you to pass along or should there be a motion that accompanies that? Some sort of straw poll or something?
You can, with your uh recommended motion to the council, uh, include recommendations in that.
Okay. So just do it two for one.
You could do that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I um will make a motion for item two, that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council um for the zone map amendment from the A one-ten zone to the AI zone in order to move forward with plans for the flex industrial space located approximately at thirty-four-twenty West Center Street in the Fort Utah neighborhood. Um, that recommendation for approval would have the following conditions, that a development agreement is recorded to guarantee proffers made by the developer regarding amenities against the river with public access easements. Number two, that the city council approves a surplus and sale of parcel twenty-one, twenty-nine, seven. And three, that the developer completes purchase of a portion of the above surplus property. And then I would add four, um, that the concerns of the planning commission be considered. And those concerns are that um abundant trees are put close to the river and that the setback is possibly increased.
And trees?
No, he's, that was, that was first, that was first one, yeah. Uh, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Great, where the motion has a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing no discussion on the motion, we'll vote on the motion.
I.
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 I'll vote I. Uh, item number two, uh, to afford a positive recommendation with the listed conditions passes unanimously. Should we have a motion, uh, just to, that, um, essentially that action we just took is independent. We, we've concluded as independent, item number three, okay? Anyone want to do a motion on item number three?
I can do it.
Thank you.
Um, I move that we recommend approval, or sorry, that we approve the concept plan. Uh, item number three, Eric, Eric Jurgensen requests concept plan approval for a new flex industrial campus and a proposed AI airport industrial zone located approximately thirty-four-twenty West Center Street.
Thank you. Does that motion have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing no discussion. All right, seeing no discussion on the motion, let's vote. Commissioner Shin.
I.
Hi.
I.
I.
Hi.
I.
I'll also vote I, that item number three passes unanimously. Given that that's our last item of the night, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Perfect. Any second on that motion?
I will second that.
Amazing. All those in favor?
I.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks everyone for your participation tonight.